All right, I want to call to order this meeting of the Carver Board of Selectmen for December 19th, 2017, starting at 7:01. This meeting is being cable cast by Area 58 Community Access Media, Channel 15. Also, there are several openings on several committees. Please refer to the Board of Selectmen page on our website for listing and application. All right, if we could all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Clark will do the honors for the community prayer.
Almighty God, humbly we pray your blessing as we concern our life with the opportunity to serve our community. Enhance us with your spirit of dignity and selflessness. May we become instruments of support and understanding as we seek to bring an environment of trust and purpose among all who provide the many services that make us all that we can become. Help us achieve the goals of our commitment in this office that is now our responsibility. And especially, we lift our prayers for all the citizens of our community that we have been allowed to serve, that they may discover the fullness and joy of life that we all seek. And keep those serving in our armed forces and our first responders in our hearts and thoughts. Amen.
All right, now we'll go to public participation. This is a time we set aside at the beginning of the meeting for any citizens of Carver that want to address the board on something that's either on the agenda or not on the agenda, to come on up and talk to us. We do ask that you keep your comments to about three minutes, so many people have a chance to talk. Do we have any takers? Going once, twice. All right, we're moving on. First order of business, the Girl Scouts have been doing a great job, and we're going here tonight, going to be recognizing five of them, five of them, for two different projects. One is for the animal holding facility, and the other is teaching life skill classes. So, we're going to start off, could I have Rebecca Deon, if she's here? Because I know one of the young ladies is in Florida. Lauren Todd. And, sit down. You're going to explain what you did. Have a seat. And Violet Perkins.
Oh no, I didn't prepare anything. Violet, you're going to need to help me, because you were the one that said you remembered the speech.
So, introduce yourselves, if you can speak into the microphone, so the folks at home can see you, because our Nielsen ratings are really high. And tell us a little bit of what you did.
So, talk into the microphone.
So, talk into the microphone.
Pull it real close.
I'll go first. Hi, I'm Lauren.
You can move the microphone close to you, so you don't have to lean.
Okay, here, go.
Hi, I'm Violet.
And I'm Lauren, and we were working on our Silver Award project to help the animal control officers in town. We're over there. And what we have done is we have alerted town citizens on how we helped the animals of Carver, and how you can help your own pet stay safe. And we also improved the town's animal holding shelter, because we don't have a real shelter, but it's temporary, so that they don't have to go to, like, another shelter, so you don't have to travel outside of Carver to get your animals. And we renovated that, so that it would be a good place to stay if your animals did happen to, if they did happen to get lost, or run away, or any of that.
Um, so, um, we started cleaning the holding rooms in June, I think.
Yeah, it was in June.
And we finished with it in November. First, we cleaned in June, and then in July, August, we painted, and September, we also painted, and in October, we also painted.
That's, that's how we did a lot of painting.
A lot of painting on this one.
And in November, we brought in some new furniture and organized a lot. And there's already been three animals there.
We'd also like to thank the great people of our town that had, that helped us along the way on this project. They helped us a lot, because we have donation boxes set up in the town hall and the library. And everyone that donated there, we got so many donations, and we would like to thank you so much, because that's really what helped the animal shelter grow into what it is. Without the donations, we wouldn't have had a lot of stuff to renovate it with. But if you go in there, it looks, it looked really nice, and we had our grand opening in November, and everyone was just like, whoa, because they looked at the before pictures and the after pictures, and they're like, wow. And we were like, yeah, this is what you guys did, because you guys took the time to donate the stuff. And even if it was like older things or new things, they both, both helped to make the shelter what it is, and we would like to thank you all for that.
Outstanding.
Thank you.
Great job.
We would also like to thank Abashan, Restore, TJ Maxx, and Lowe's for donating paint and furniture to the shelter. And we would also like to thank the library and town hall for letting us put donation boxes there. We also went to several events, in which we made pet toys and got donations. We also brought a trifold that me, Becca, and Lauren put together. And we brought that there, and we went to Old Home Day and National Night Out for that.
Okay, and then, we also, we did a lot. We also went to the library, and we went to a few daycares to read stories to the children about animals, and we taught them a little bit about animal safety for their pets.
Very cool.
Very good.
Great job.
Anybody on the board want to start off? Mr. Clark?
So, you said you've had three animals there so far? What kinds of animals?
Dogs.
Bugs?
Yeah.
Three dogs?
Yeah.
But it could be cat, or it could be cats or dogs?
Yeah. It's really like interchangeable, and it's basically whatever we can take into the space. Because the animal control officers save all kinds of animals. Like, we went in there, and they were like, we have, like, we help so many animals, and we were like, well, we need to make it a place for all animals to stay.
Excellent. Sarah?
Yeah, I don't know how many of you have been into the new animal holding shelter, but I was there on that opening day, and there are so many paws on the walls. They really did do a lot of painting. A lot of the furniture is some really deluxe cages with little plush pillows, and it's just a really nice, nice outfit, and the before-after pictures, I'm sure you could, people could still see it if they got permission. Yeah, you girls did an awful lot. Thank you so much for that.
Helen?
I just want to say how proud I am of both you girls. I've seen you grown, and I'm just really proud of what you've accomplished in your short time on planet Earth. And Lauren, I do have to say, for someone who didn't have a speech memorized, you did quite well. Keep up the good work. Volunteering is absolutely phenomenal.
David?
I don't have much more to say than that. I can tell you that getting up in front of the entire town and explaining what you did is a very difficult task, and your public speaking skills were well received. Great job. I think Girl Scouts are a great organization, and I'm so happy that it's live and active in our town of Carver. Great job, guys.
I think, I think all three of you girls that did this project really deserve this commendation. And it's not so much, just so much working on the animal shelter, but doing so much to get the town together, going to Abashan and businesses, and getting people to donate things, making it really a community event to help get this done, and that is a tremendous thing, because you're not only helping, you know, animals that get lost, but you're also helping build relationships in the town, and for that, you should really be congratulated. So, if I could have the members of the board meet around front, we have certificates, and young ladies, just come up, and we want the animal officers to come on up.
Move this back where it goes.
Come on. Rebecca, this is?
Yeah, yeah.
Come on up, young ladies. You get to be front and center. Front and center. Okay, we have certificates from the Board of Selectmen of recognition for Violet Perkins for her dedication and hard work for the Carver Animal Control Holding Facility, and this is given today, this end of December, 2017, so for Violet. And for Lauren, for her dedication and hard work for the Carver Animal Control Holding Facility. And we also have one for the other. Thank you for all the hard work. Thank you. If I could have Isabella Pompey come on up to the table, and Grace Rizzuto. And these young ladies developed after-school life skill classes for the middle high school students, so if you could tell us a little bit of how you came up with this and the work you had to do, we'd appreciate it.
Pull the mic rail up close to you, folks.
I'm Bella.
I'm Grace.
So, we came up with this project because we heard about in school, since there was going to be budget cuts, we learned that some of the, maybe that some of the extracurricular classes were going to be cut, and that we were going to have to pay for some of the things that you stay after school for, like, best buddies or drama or GSA and stuff like that. So, we came up with the idea to, like, bring classes that you don't normally learn in school, and bring them after school. So, the class that we did do was an interview skills class. So, we had Violet's mom, who actually works at, uh, TJ Maxx, as an interviewer, and she does interviewing, so she interviews anyone who works there, like teens and stuff, so she gave a lesson on, like, what we should wear, should say, and like stuff with that, like questions that come up.
We did have some, like, non-Girl Scouts come to the meeting, which is like what we intended, and we had to, like, go talk to different professionals and ask them if they would be interested in, like, teaching a class.
I think we asked, at Old Home Day, we saw a lot of people too. They had, we saw a lady named Sue, and we talked to her, because Ann actually knew her, and she said that she would be interesting, interested in teaching a knitting class. So, we found any local, like, Ann also came up with the idea, and we, she came up with the idea to look for, like, any local shelters or hospitals that would need anything like blankets, or like baby caps, or anything like that. So, me and Grace went online, and we were searching for any local hospitals, like, that needed anything, or hospitals and anything that wasn't local, because we could always ship it out. And our next class is going to be the knitting class, so knitting blankets and baby caps and anything that hospitals or shelters might need.
Outstanding.
And we did set up, like, a trifold, went to the Old Home Day and Carver Night Out to try to, like, talk to people who would be interested in taking the classes or teaching one.
Yeah, we had a sign-up sheet with everyone, so we had a sign-up sheet for anyone who wanted to sign up for the interview class, and we would give them any information that they needed, and parents could also, like, sign up their kid or anything, because if they weren't there. I think we had about five to six people at the interview class, it wasn't too much, but we weren't expecting too much. But we still had a good time, and we did a practice interview with one of the kids that was there, so to see what they kind of learned, and it was interactive, so it wasn't just a lecture, so kids still did get to learn, and, yeah, that's, and we have a few classes lined up, so it's going to be one class each school term. So, we did the interview class our first term, and then the second term, we're doing our knitting class, and then the third term, I think we're doing a crocheting class, where we're crocheting pot cozies and anything, and like handing them out to teachers and stuff like that, so.
Very good.
Very good.
Mr. Robertson, I'll lead off with you.
No comments. I will tell you that the interview skill set is something that is painfully lacking in the world. I used to interview many people, and so getting help on interviewing and selling your skill set to somebody is admirable, for you to take charge of that and take the lead of it. It's a skill set you'll be doing the rest of your life, so learning very early is a very, you know, my accommodations, my happiness, or whatever the word I'm looking for is, I'm very pleased to see it active. So, good job. Great, great idea too, by the way.
Thanks.
Helen?
I'm not sure either one of you will have to interview, because I foresee entrepreneurial spirit in running a company, because one of the most important things about either owning your own company or running a business is when you see a problem, you don't put a Band-Aid on it, you look for a solution, and you guys are so far ahead of the game, I just commend you how far advanced you are for your age. Keep up the great work.
Sarah?
Yes, I concur with both comments. I also wanted to say that I really appreciate the spirit of giving and community that you showed by doing this, and particularly the things you're making for the homeless shelters and the hospitals.
Yeah, thank you.
That means a lot to them as well, I'm sure.
Thank you.
Mr. Clark?
No, I'd agree with everything that's been said. I think with, to Helen's point, you'll have to understand the finer points of conducting an interview where you're interviewing somebody to see if you want to hire them, I think.
That's exactly correct.
But, no, I just think it's such a great idea to introduce the idea of life skills into the high school. So that, you know, it's one thing to go through the academics, but to also come away and have had the opportunity to pick up some of these additional types of life skills that people are going to need, once they're no longer in that academic environment. So, it's just a great idea. Congratulations.
Thank you.
And I think it's great that you just didn't go to do one thing, the interview, and just say, okay, that's it, we did it.
Yeah.
You've come up with another one, and another one, and hopefully you'll have, you can mentor people, younger Girl Scouts that are coming up, that can continue this tradition in the middle high school for years to come. Because I agree with everybody, and especially, life skills are, there's so much else they're trying to teach you, life skills in the high, middle high school kind of fall by the wayside a little bit, and you fell in a tremendous niche. And don't feel bad that you only had five for your first class. First off, I think that's great, just even have that many.
Yeah.
But as this keeps going on, I think it's something that'll build, and you've given it a tremendous foundation, and thank you very much for your efforts. So, if I could have you girls come up, and the board come out front. And yes, as you saw, you have to be in the middle. All right, for Grace Rizzuto, for her hard work and dedication to the community by developing after-school life skill classes for the middle high school students in Carver.
Thank you.
For Bella or Isabella?
Bella.
Bella, okay. Bella Pompey, for her hard work and dedication to the community by developing after-school life skill classes for the middle high school students. Congratulations. Hey, get this shit, everybody. I thought you had an honest idea of keeping it going and mentoring. Fortunately, I don't think it was picked up by the microphone. Hey, thank you very much, ladies, and you're more than welcome to stay for the rest of the meeting, because we run such riveting meetings here.
Although it's getting late, you probably have homework that you need to get home and do immediately, so.
No, 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 we're near the holiday, Christmas break, so, you know.
I'm trying to help them out.
Well, go ahead, yeah, you can go.
You can go ahead and go.
It sits.
We won't feel offended.
Yeah, it's all, uh-huh. Great job. Thanks.
You're welcome, and thank you so much. Chief Dupley. Is Officer Ferguson here, or is he still investigating? Oh, good.
Thank you, good evening. It's my pleasure to bring before you Jeremy Ferguson for his formal swearing-in. Jeremy's our newest police officer. As you guys will recall, he started the academy back in June, the Plymouth Police Academy, and graduated this November. From all reports, did an excellent job. He's begun his field training with us now, and soon will be on his own on the road. Jeremy's lived in town for almost his entire life. He worked previously for the Carver Fire Department and the Carver EMS. His dad, as you recall, was a longtime employee of the town, and we look forward to him being a longtime employee of the police department, so. Before we do his swearing-in, I don't know if you guys had any comments or questions you wanted to ask Jeremy, but we want to bring him here for grilling.
Who wants to take the first round? Eva, Sarah?
Jeremy, I'm really.
Jeremy, move the microphone in front, there you go.
I'm not going to put you on the spot, I just wanted to tell you how proud I am of you, and I know your parents and your family are really, really proud. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Stay on the side, Mr. Robertson.
Yeah, I went to your graduation, and it was a remarkable event for me, it's my first time I've been there, and I was so proud that we had Carver representation there, and you looked professional, and I was very, very pleased to be there, so it's nice to meet you too, by the way.
You too.
Helen?
Ellen, Jeremy, I just want to say congratulations, but more importantly, thank you for wanting to serve this town.
Thank you.
Wish you the best.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Clark?
I was fortunate enough to be on the interview committee, and I can attest to, anyone that's familiar with our administrative sergeant knows the type of detailed background that is involved, and anyone that can survive that vetting certainly is above board, but no, it's a pleasure to participate in this interview process, because you have an opportunity to ask the types of questions in an intimate atmosphere that really helps you get some insight into the individuals. And certainly, I was, knowing your parents, I could make some assumptions as to your character, since they're two of the best people I know. But at the same time, the way you performed under the pressure, because it is, it is some pressure to sit there with the interview, and the answers you had to the questions really cemented in my mind the idea that you were someone that I would want protecting me in Carver. So, thank you for being willing to step forward, and I'm looking forward to having you on the force.
Thank you very much.
All right, my turn. And no, I won't put you on the spot. First off, congratulations on your progress so far, making it through the academy, not an easy task, also making it through, as Ron said, the interview process. I've heard enough horror stories on how those go, so congratulations. It's always kind of special for me, especially being a member of the board now, seeing people that I've watched grow up in this town. I mean, I've known you for a long time, all through the fire department, I think I was one of your instructors in recruit training on the fire department, known your dad and mom for a real long time. And it's good to see someone that raised in Carver that wants to go ahead and serve Carver, because being a police officer, you are serving all the citizens of Carver, and it's a hard job, but you're up for the challenge, I know you're going to do a fantastic job, and I just want to thank you for stepping up and taking that responsibility, and putting yourself out there to be one of our officers, one of part of the finest police department of any town in Massachusetts, and I know you'll do yourself, the town, and your parents, and all your friends and relatives real proud, and thank you for joining.
Thank you very much.
So, I guess we'll bring up the town clerk?
Did you say the clown clerk?
I'm never going to live this down.
You will not.
A thousand pardons.
You will not.
Wow. I've goofed, but I've never made that one. Put that in the paper.
I'm so tired, I might have a cold.
I'm more tired than that, as you can tell.
So, please raise your right hand, read the after name, I state your name.
I, Jeremy Ferguson.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will bear true faith.
That I will bear true faith.
And allegiance.
And allegiance.
To the United States of America.
To the United States of America.
And the Commonwealth of Massachusetts.
The Commonwealth of Massachusetts.
And will support the Constitution.
Will support the Constitution.
And laws thereof.
And laws thereof.
So help me God.
Good job. Let's go around. Yeah, let's go around. I'm going to keep walking out the door if I can't talk straight.
Well, maybe, maybe you could stand with the clown.
Thank you very much. Congratulations. Thank you.
Great job. Picture with the board and feet.
Thank you.
You're always in the center. You're in the center. No, you're just going to want to get like, you know. Again, congratulations, thank you so much. Thank you. Thank you again. Thank you. Congratulations. I didn't know how tired I was.
Congratulations. I've been so tired.
Oh, yeah. Well, that just assured me.
So, we do have cake and refreshments next door, if anybody wants some.
Oh, cool, thank you.
Uh, okay. No, I'm good, I got coffee, thanks.
Where are you going?
Want water?
No, I'm outside, thank you. And you notice, this time, we're getting through people, the stuff for people there to hear, so we're not making them sit through the whole thing? All right, having been sitting very patiently there in the front row, we have an appointment. Mr. Hoffman, would you mind if we let Ms. Hamilton go first? Okay, Haley Ann Hamilton, who's?
Harley.
Harley. I told you, I'm tired, I'm sorry. Looking for appointment request for the Agricultural Commission, so, Harley? If you want to speak in the microphone, give us your name, so I can butcher it again.
Hello, I am Harley Ann Hamilton.
And?
Okay, I didn't know if you had a question.
No, no, you can keep on going, you're doing good.
So, I was looking to be appointed to the Agricultural Commission. I have been attending the meetings as a guest for over eight months now, and I believe that I had a lot to offer to the group that is already appointed in those positions. As I travel the country, and now I can say that I've traveled to other countries as well, and learned about our culture, our practices within our town and around our country and our world, and I believe that with that, I can bring in new ideas for our town and our community.
Excellent. Ms. Ewan?
Yes, I just want to say, if anyone deserves this appointment, it's Harley Ann, Ms. Agriculture Massachusetts.
Right.
How about?
So, I was looking to be appointed to the Agricultural Commission. I have been attending the meetings as a guest for over eight months now, and I believe that I had a lot to offer to the group that is already appointed in those positions. As I travel the country, and now I can say that I've traveled to other countries as well, and learned about our culture, our practices within our town and around our country and our world, and I believe that with that, I can bring in new ideas for our town and our community.
Excellent.
Right. Ms. Ewen.
Yes, I just want to say, if anyone deserves this appointment, it's Harley Ann, Miss Agriculture of Massachusetts.
Right.
How about that, huh?
Anybody else?
No, other than just, I just think her qualifications, you know, speak for themselves. So, we're lucky that you have this interest, so thank you.
I want to thank you for coming forward. It's awful hard for us to get people to go ahead and volunteer to fill these different boards that we have, and I think it's tremendous that you're stepping forward. So, given that, I will take a motion, entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Do you have a motion seconded? Any further discussion?
Well, just to say that you're also joining a great commission. There's some great people on the commission.
Yeah, they're amazing people, and they took me in right away and taught me how everything is running in the town, and then we were able to work well together on new things that were happening at the farmer's market and other things that we want to start in the coming year.
That's terrific.
That's good to hear.
Very good. So, that being said, all those in favor of appointing Harley Ann to the Agricultural Commission, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Eyes have it, five zero, unanimous. Welcome aboard, and thank you so much.
Welcome. Thank you.
Thanks for volunteering. That's great.
And as I told the Girl Scouts and the police officers, you know, if you want to stay for the whole meeting, that's fine. I mean, I'm sure Mr. Hoffman would really like the audience. All right, moving on. Mr. Hoffman, for the Recreation Committee. How are you doing tonight, Jim?
Good, how are you?
Hello, James.
Name and what you're applying for, please.
Jim Hoffman, for Great Meadow Drive, Carver. I am applying for the appointment for the Recreation Committee, one of the openings that's on there. For those that don't know, I've been in town for 27 years now, three children, one, youngest one is in fifth grade, so going through all the town sports and all that fun stuff, and noticed that there was a couple openings on the Recreation Committee. I was on the Recreation Committee probably 15 years ago. I know it's important to the town, especially now that we're growing, and just saw the need to have some free time now. So, I figured I would just go for that appointment.
Comments or other questions from the board? Ms. Ewen, first side. Anybody else first?
I was just going to say, we had some folks in from the high school that they're trying to take the Recreation Committee to a new level. I think you're probably familiar with that and so forth. So, it's good to get someone of your caliber interested that would be willing to participate and help address that, because as the complexes go in over at the new elementary school, and as we redo the high school complex and so forth, the need to have a Recreation Committee that can help oversee utilization and care and maintenance of those facilities in conjunction with what the town does is going to be very important, so. Because it's going to be a multimillion dollar investment in all of that.
And that was one of the things that attracted me to it as well, because I know in the next few years, it's going to be quite different than what it is now.
Sarah.
Well, again, I'm going to highly recommend Jim Hoffman for this position. Jim was, a long time ago, was on our Open Space and Recreation Plan Committee, where we wrote the first, the town's first one in many, many years. And he brought a lot to the table doing that. And then with your experience on planning board, I just think that you're going to be a great asset. Thanks for stepping up, Jim.
I just wanted to thank you, Jim. I was just ready to make the motion 10 minutes ago, because you are phenomenal, so I just know you'll do great things on the Recreation Committee.
David.
I don't know you, but I like you already, because you've... I just, I think the world of the board, and if they have such praise for you, I can't think that you would just be an outstanding addition to whatever we have. Thanks for doing that.
Okay, we're not going to hold it against you that you're a relative newcomer to the town of Carver, only 27 years. But you've done some great stuff in town, and like Helen was saying, on the planning board. Or Sarah said that. Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion's been made, and seconded. Appoint Jim Hoffman to the Recreation Committee. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Zero.
Aye, aye.
Unanimous.
And again, Jim, you're welcome to stay for the balance of the meeting. If you'd like to, I have some homework to do.
You can go ahead and stay and say how many more times I goof up between now and the end of the meeting.
No, I think you've...
Before I go ahead and give it over to the vice chair to take over.
I think you've already, that's a whopper.
You've already peaked. You've peaked.
Jim, just FYI, our next meeting for the sports complex of the middle high school is going to be next Thursday, starting at 6:00 PM. You're more than welcome to come, and it'll kind of give a highlight of what that project is.
Okay, good. I'll see you then. Thank you very much.
Thank you again, and thank you for stepping forward on this.
Nice to meet you, Jim.
All right. Are we going to go on with the next appointment without the individuals being here?
Oh, absolutely.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, and I have to apologize, because I should have told Bill Duggan to attend, and I didn't, so.
Well, I'll make the motion to approve John Carter and Bill Duggan to the Carver Marion Wareham Regional Refuge District.
I'll second that, yeah.
Okay, motion made and seconded. Discussion, Mr. Clerk.
Yeah, I just wanted to mention that I think we've had discussions in the past about concerns we have with the Refuge District. We have Dave Robertson serving on the committee already. We had two resignations. I think with John Carter and Bill Duggan coming in from the Finance Committee, and with their background on finance, I think that's exactly the type of individuals we need to help bird dog that commission. So, I feel very strongly they'll do a great job in conjunction with Dave.
And a long time ago, Bill Duggan was the chair of the town's Recycling Committee, when it existed.
Oh, he didn't even mention that.
Yeah, modest.
There he is.
David, anything?
No.
I'll wait you finish swallowing.
Oh, no, it's a pleasure to not, you know, make the motion, because John and Bill are two more phenomenal Carver residents.
And again, thanking them for stepping forward. I have to agree with Mr. Clerk. We've had some questions about how that's all going, and I think it's important for us to have full representation of the town on that district committee. Also, with the financial background of both of them from the Finance Committee, I think they can help clear up, or at least help us understand more some of our questions and get answers to what we're looking for. Mr. Milonowski.
I would just echo that. They, the Regional Refuge District is a governmental body, it's a body politic, and they have to follow the same financial rules, regulations that we do with the Department of Revenue. So, one of the things that we are, you know, working on trying to get as part of our investigation is all of the, or trying to find copies of their previous audits and other financial records, so that we can go through and do a thorough analysis. And I think the team that you've appointed, or soon to appoint with Dave and the others, will help us get to some full clarity on this organization.
All right, seeing nobody else rushing to the microphones. We have a motion and second. So, all those in favor appointing John Carter and Bill Duggan to the Carver Marion Wareham Regional Refuge District, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Zero. Five zero. And now, wow, are we really that far ahead? Don't goof up.
I don't stop.
Moving on to the Town Administrator Update, and just because we're ahead of schedule doesn't give you extra time.
What was that, Mr. Chairman?
Move on.
Yes, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. The staff and all the department heads have been working pretty aggressively on putting together our operational budget. And this, in essence, will complete step two of our four-step budget process. Step three puts it over into the Finance Department. Our Finance Committee, where they will, again, begin reviewing and interviewing the department heads, and coming back to the Board of Selectmen with their recommendations after doing some additional review of everything. I have emailed the chairman of the Finance Committee, and he is going to start moving forward with putting that together. What we have in front of you, and it is in your email, is this is the summary budget that we put together for town meeting on the front and back page of this. This includes a balanced budget that provides the same level of services that were provided this previous year, and in some instances, we were able to do some additional items in different departments. As you go through here, again, this is a balanced budget. It does include everything that's necessary to run the town. There were no staff layoffs included in here. There also were no new positions added as well. So, this is with the same head count that we have in 2018, as is what is recommended for 2019. Now, again, this is a recommendation from myself and from the different department heads. At the end of the day, it's up to the Board of Selectmen, with advice from the Finance Committee, for you to choose whether to accept the figures that are in front of you, or to modify those and bring those to town meeting for town meeting's final approval. Built into here, we do have a cost of living increase for the employees. Again, going back to our charts that we've done before in comparing the different departments, I'm sorry, the different bargaining units, as to who has received cost of living increases, we were able to build that into the budget as well this year, which is, will be the second year in a row after missing two, four, six, eight, after going nine years with no cost of living increase. Now, this will be the second year that we've been able to do that. Other than that, there's really nothing out of the ordinary here at all. So, I think it's continuing to move forward and refine some of the changes that have happened to the town over the last few years, so we can have a sustainable budget going forward and provide the level of services that we can afford.
So, we don't need to vote on this?
You do not need to vote on this tonight. This is just being released now, and will be released to the Finance Committee tomorrow for them and for you to have your budget meetings. Now, last year, as part of the budget meeting process, you chose to have a few of the department heads come in in your January and February meeting, and we kind of, you know, gave everybody about 10 minutes to provide an update on their budget and have the departments talk to you. That seemed to go pretty well last year, and it also puts it in front of the camera so that there's full transparency with the public. I would probably recommend that you go in that direction unless the board chooses to go in a different direction. And then also, the Capital Outlight Committee is going to begin their review too of the Capital Outlight Plan that I was presenting to you back in November.
I thought that worked out very well last year.
I would think we would want to do that again, have the different department heads come for us on that. Yes, Mr. Clerk.
Yeah, I was going to say, the alternative of what we've done in the past is to select a Saturday in February and try to do everything in one day. I think it actually works out better to do it during the course of our meetings. I don't know anybody that's going to sit down and slug their way at home watching, you know, a whole day's worth of meetings, whereas they can tune in and just catch those. And so, if we take the major departments and have them come in as we go through our meetings in January and February, I think that makes sense. I did have a couple of questions. You said Capital Outlay's already gotten their release, so they can begin their work on looking at the capital program. Obviously, the state of Massachusetts is going to finalize the budget for this fiscal year sometime next July. So, what type of crystal ball are we working off of here? What kind of hedge do you have built in here in terms of guessing what our final numbers are going to be? I know historically, the last couple of years, we haven't been very far off at all when we're making a guess as far ahead, but just curious as to what your level of confidence is that the numbers, the relief we're anticipating in the way of state aid is accurate.
So, what I passed out today would be our operating budget, and built into the operating budget, there is nothing additional incorporated into here, because this would just be the department review. But when we did our budget forecast, this was worked on by both the superintendent, the school business manager, finance director, and myself. And in here, we did do a pretty aggressive review of what we believe the state finances were or are going to be. Earlier this year, the state finances were down in collection. Now, they're up. And whether that's tied, you know, to this bubble we're having in the stock market is yet to be determined what the final numbers will be at the end of the year. However, it's important to note that this year's operating budget for the state actually wasn't technically balanced. It was a couple hundred thousand dollars in deficit, because there were some funding that they were allocating as revenue coming in, which the federal government was going to cancel, so they knew the money was not going to come in, but it hadn't been canceled yet. So, even if the state comes in with some additional revenue, we do not anticipate that that's going to affect the budget at all significantly. And that also ties into the fact that although we do receive a decent amount of state aid, also that state aid is actually, there's a lot of offsets that are incorporated into that as well. So, to answer your question, this past year, when we did the budget, we a little bit, we overforecast for some of the state revenue. It actually came in lower, but we were able to balance that off with some additional other increased permits, so we were able to net zero, if you will. And I think this year, we'll be heading in that same direction.
So, if there's a change, you would expect it might be a positive change? You think we're, if we're making an error, it's probably on the side of caution, what we've put together?
I would say so, yes. And if there is a change, I would expect it to have a very minimal impact, less than a fraction of a fraction of a percent.
Good.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Do you, I have a couple of things that kind of jumped out to me on this. Do you want me to ask them now, or at a future meeting?
Whatever you'd like.
All right. I just noticed a couple of spots, and just need a little clarification. One is on police salaries, that you're running about 17,000 less than the requested. Is there a rationale on that?
Yes, the chief and I did meet on this, and the revised number is an updated number he gave me after we went through and did some additional calculations. We do have one officer that is going to have to retire at the end of this calendar year due to his age, and therefore, that's going to come in at a lower salary when that person is rehired. That's really where you're seeing most of the change.
Okay, so he's not going to be shocked when he sees this?
The chief is not, no. These are the chief's revised numbers.
Okay, I was wanting to make sure. And the other one that kind of jumped out at me was council on aging operating.
Yes.
You're looking at about 8,000 less than requested.
Yes, that actually ties into Meals on Wheels. We've actually have a surplus in that account, and how do I say this? There's much more scrutiny on food being served versus being taken out of the building in cases. And therefore, there is not, there's not much of a need anymore to supplement missing food.
That relates to a problem we had a while ago.
That would be correct.
That was corrected.
Yes.
Okay. So, that's where, okay, thank you. I just want to make sure that, you know, the director there was happy with that. No, you did very well.
Which is unusual.
Whoa. Hey, I'm just messing up words. I'm not taking shots. All right. Anything else on the budget?
I do not believe so, no.
All right.
I will also say that we spent a lot of time really making sure that it's very transparent, how it's put together, and we're pretty proud of it.
Okay. Moving capital building project updates.
Yes, so, in the process of winding down the middle high school project, that's currently in its final punch list, and just going through, making sure that the town has all of the warranties and certifications that we have paid for. The elementary school continues to be ahead of schedule and under budget, and as part of that, we are looking at doing some modifications to our IT technology, so that we can move the townwide technology for the schools in the town as part of our centralized IT department all over to the elementary school, so that that becomes our hub coming out of there. So, we're moving forward in that direction. As it relates to the high school sports complex, our next meeting is next Thursday at 6:00 PM. They have gone forward and are making some additional modifications to the plans, so that we can reduce down the overall cost, and they will have their geotechnical work completed, so that I think after that meeting, which is actually followed by a CPC meeting, I think on next Thursday, we will have a really good, solid handle on the project at that point.
And before you move on, I would encourage people, it's broadcast over Area 58, or to come to the meetings. I've attended a couple of them. Even though you...
They have gone forward and are making some additional modifications to the plans so that we can reduce down the overall cost. And they will have their geotechnical work completed so that I think after that meeting, which is actually followed by a CPC meeting, I think on next Thursday, we will have a really good, solid handle on the project at that point.
And before you move on, I would encourage people, it's broadcast over Area 58, or to come to the meetings. I've attended a couple of them, even though you don't end up on the, it's not generally on the agenda for public comment. The meetings I've gone to, members of the audience who have been sitting through the meetings are invited to talk. I realize there's a lot of trimming and making new priorities to reduce the number, so that's why I haven't gotten too excited about it yet. But as you get closer to a agreed upon, quote, "final" cost, if it's still too high, I do have some concerns. So I look forward to the next meeting and seeing how those costs have been hopefully consolidated down a little bit, but we'll wait and see what happens at the meeting. But I do encourage the citizens, because this is going to be a very important project, not only for now, but for 10, 15, 20, 25 years down the road because anybody that's used that facility or gone to a football game or a soccer game or a field hockey game or to the track, the track's not safe for the students. The football field, because of the drought a couple of years ago, is in terrible shape. So this is, this is an important project that's coming up. Sorry to have interrupted, but continue.
And when's the next meeting for that?
It'll be next Thursday at 6:00 PM.
Here, in this room?
And then CPC will be at 7:00. And it will be on Area 58, so anyone can watch it. So staying ahead of schedule.
Way to go.
The Council on Aging and the COA Community Center, we're still working with, forming a committee with Carol. And my intention is that after the first of the year, we will move forward with having the COA Committee hold a public hearing and try to gather some comments from the public on the plan that they have proposed or any other plans, there are options that are out there. So we'll be moving forward with that. And then also, the Chief, Doofly, and I are moving forward with the Police Strategic Plan. There's still some revisions that they're, the consultants are doing to the plan and trying to put together a list of comparable communities so they can come out and do some comparison to what we're looking to do. When that plan comes out, again, I think we've talked many times that we still need to add a couple people to the police force over time. That's not going to happen this year, but we need to figure out in the future how to add some additional positions. And again, we're looking at the future as to how public safety continues to be served in the town. So that is moving along well also.
Do we have a timeframe of when we might see a preliminary? We'd like in February, March?
Sure, so I'm anticipating that we will have, hopefully by the end of January, we'll have the report available and some type of a presentation from the Chief and I and/or the consultants on what they have found and what some of their recommendations are. If that can happen sooner, it will. But, you know, we want to use that as a basis so that we can start to quantify what an appropriate cost would be for a facility that if the plan is aligned, we can move that forward to annual town meeting as well as the COA Center, as well as the high school sports complex. There is an advantage of putting together a larger bond than putting together smaller bonds. There's a lot of administrative costs that goes into issuing bonds. So when we can combine these, it actually saves the town a significant amount of money in the future.
Mr. Clark, remembering that we're ahead of schedule, you want it stayed that way?
I just wanted, I wanted to suggest that, I realize it might be a financial issue, but if we can have the consultants present for the presentation, I think that there'd be a value in having them, since it's their report, be here as part of the presentation.
That's, that's right.
I think, I think we're all pretty much in agreement on that. Good point.
I'm done.
I think many of you met him with the, when they had the charrette. Their SWAT meeting.
Yes.
SWAT meeting.
What'd you call it?
SWAT meeting.
First, that's not what you said.
I said charrette.
Yeah.
That's another type of group meeting.
Moving on. Anything else, sir?
Municipal group meeting. I'll go there.
Mr. Melonowski, anything else?
Um, the answer's no. Move on to Selectmen's portion of the meeting?
See, I knew that he had something else.
We are doing just perfect. I have nothing else to update you on.
Very good. Selectmen's update. Are we going to start off, we're going to go from right to left? So Mr. Robertson?
I don't have anything specific, but it is the holiday season and I would suggest that if you know somebody who is in the service, their home is either out at sea or at a camp somewhere and a friendly card or note from anybody in the town is very much appreciated. So just think of the first responders during this time and the people that are protecting us. Merry Christmas.
Sarah?
Thank you. I just wanted to, again, let people know how much, how important the Girl Scouts are, how many of them there are in Carver. We have a huge number of Girl Scouts and every time I drive by the triangle, especially this time of year, they're always doing something to that triangle. They're planting flowers in the spring or they're decorating it at Christmas. I know we have a new slide at the playground because of a Girl Scout Silver Project.
Amazing.
They really are, they really are. And I also wanted to mention, just because I'm not sure that everybody knows or remembers, not you guys, but maybe in the general public, there might be some people who don't remember or realize that the Community Preservation Act funds are funding the ball fields and playgrounds at the elementary school and hopefully will be funding the ones at the high school, at least in part. Is that correct, Michael, or is it going to be the whole thing?
It's yet to be determined.
Okay. But hopefully, we'll be able to use Community Preservation Act money for that as well. So I've been approached by a few people who were concerned, oh, is our taxes going to go up because of that? And I said, well, not for the elementary school because we did get that funding and hopefully not for the middle high school. So that's a good thing.
Sure is.
Ellen?
I just want to wish everyone a very Merry Christmas and a Happy Hanukkah and have a safe and happy holiday.
Mr. Clark?
The only thing I'd add is for those of you that search for the Selectmen's meetings on your TV, you can also on your computer, go to Area 58. And a day or two after the Selectmen's meeting, the meetings are online. And one advantage of that is that if there's a couple of particular areas you want to skip to, you can just go right to those, watch those, and don't have to sit through the entire meeting unless you choose to.
Aren't they also on YouTube?
Pardon me?
Aren't they also on YouTube?
Well, they're transferred, the link is to YouTube. But if you go to Area 58, you'll find it for the Planning Board, the School Committee, the Board of Selectmen. It's a faster, quicker way to, instead of waiting for the meeting to show up on regular TV. And other than that, yeah, just, I believe we're at the sixth night of Hanukkah. So to our Jewish friends, we wish them a Happy Hanukkah and a Merry Christmas to everyone coming up in just next Monday. So the best to everyone.
Just following up on Area 58, I think as most of you know, I did a cable show.
Into the microphone, please.
I was mic'd at that time. Two weeks ago, I did a cable show that should be airing shortly on just kind of a state of the town and some of the, where the budget issues are. So I was interviewed for a grueling hour. And hopefully, I'll bring some light and shed some light on some of the inner workings of the town.
Have we gotten any word when that's going to start airing?
We'd have to talk to the person on the Board.
I'll find out. Thank you.
All right. I want to reiterate what Sarah said and Helen about not only the Girl Scouts, but the Boy Scouts. Both of those organizations do a lot of work in this town. The Boy Scouts, we always have them coming forward for their Eagle Scout projects. They do some tremendous work and the girls, as you've witnessed tonight, are doing a tremendous job. So we're very fortunate to have very dedicated leaders that are leading these young men and women as they go forward. And I think the town is lucky to have them. So I want to keep that in mind. Also, holiday season, those who celebrate, Happy Hanukkah. I think that ends on the 20th, which will be tomorrow. And for everybody else, a very Merry Christmas. Hopefully, you can spend it in quality time with your family and loved ones. It's a time of year for that. But as you're spending time and looking forward to spending time with loved ones, don't forget those who are less fortunate by giving to shame gives thanks. Food pantry, we always want to, always remember them. All the hard work done by the Council of Aging, Meals on Wheels, Meals During the Week. I also want to thank the Police Department and the Police Union for a tremendous Build the Cruiser drive that they had. Had a very good turnout there and they got an awful lot of toys and donations. So making sure that some less fortunate kids can have a Merry Christmas. And finally, Happy New Year. This is the season for a lot of gatherings and parties. If you are going out and vibing and some adult beverages, please use your head. We, this is not the time of year you want to find yourself, you know, hearing the police going to an accident or the fire department or the ambulance. Designated driver, if you're going to be drinking, make sure you have a designated driver to get you home. And that's it from me on that, just Merry Christmas and Happy New Year. Moving on, Chapter 61A, AD Make Peace portion on Wedham Road Map 107 Lot 1-4. Do we have somebody here for that?
I, in looking it over, I did have some questions just because I was a little confused between you had Lot 3, Lot 4, and then Lot 3A and 4A. I think I understand what they were doing, but I guess we'll have to rely on the faith of the fact that our planning director signed off on this and...
They're creating two single-family lots.
Is that what the intent was?
Roughly sixty thousand square feet, but they're leaving themselves an entrance to the back 500 acres.
Because I noticed on one of them, there's a lot of wetlands on one of the properties.
Well, a lot has to be at least seventy percent upland, so.
Really? That much? And again, I know sometimes those plot plans aren't to scale necessarily, the way they're drawn up. But you, so you looked at, you're comfortable with it, Sarah?
Well, I just read the plans.
Okay.
I don't, I don't actually know the site, but that would be a determination the Conservation Commission would have to figure out. But presumably, I mean, Rich Serkey is taking care of this for the seller. He kind of knows what he's, what he's doing. So I'm pretty sure he didn't cut out a lot that was less than seventy percent upland.
Okay, I'll make a motion to approve then?
Motion to exercise first right of refusal.
Yeah.
I'll make a motion to exercise the first right of refusal.
Second.
Okay, we have motion and seconded. Further discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Five, zero. All right. 2018 License Renewals for Approval, the Common Spectacular Liquor Entertainment Automatic Amusement Class 1, 2, 3 and Commercial Garages. And this has been posted on our website, correct? So anybody that wants to look at these and see who's on them can go ahead.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I'll make a motion to approve these licenses with the exception of those indicating taxes are due and that those not be approved until those taxes are paid in full or payment.
Yeah, contingent on, instead of except.
Contingent upon.
Payment of taxes.
Payment taxes.
You said accept. You voted all of them, but they're contingent.
It really should be contingent on payment or a plan set up with the treasure collector.
What Sarah said.
And do I have a second of what Sarah said?
Second.
You can't second your own thing.
Oh, okay, right.
I'll second it.
Second.
All right. Discussion. Anybody? Because I do. I, yeah, I'm really concerned. A couple of our Class Twos are rears in taxes and one is really in the rear of taxes. Have we not heard from them for a couple of years? Is that what's going on here? Do we know?
Well, we do, we normally, every year, tie approval to paying taxes. So there shouldn't have been anything left over from last year, else they shouldn't have got their license last year.
Well, they may not have.
We will look into those again. Everyone is charged fourteen percent interest if they haven't paid their taxes.
Bottom line is, they won't get their license until they settle the taxes.
But I think, I think it's important for the town to know that the vast majority of the people that have been, that have applied for the licenses, like ninety-nine point nine percent. Yes, they're paid in full. They're doing their civic duty and the responsible thing and paying the fees. So to only have two out of this whole list, that's actually not a bad thing, but those two just won't get their license then.
Again, Mr. Chairman, they're charged fourteen percent interest if they're late.
If they're late, fourteen percent.
Yes.
All right. All those in favor of approving these licenses contingent upon payment, full payment of taxes or setting up a payment plan with the Treasure Department and paying into those payment plans, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Five, zero. And since my computer decided to reboot itself now. Approval to put forth vacancies on April 28, 2018 Annual Town Election Ballot, a library trustees and redevelopment authority. Mr. Melonowski?
Well, yes, these are to fill vacancies, not vacancies, but these are positions that need to go on there midterm, if you will. So the, so you need to make a vote on this so that the clerk can start to prepare the ballot.
One would be the position that Mr. Sinclair filled on the RDA.
Yep.
And we have the same situation, library trustees.
We had somebody resign on the library trustee, yes.
Mr. Sinclair's would be just for a one-year term, I believe, because he was filling out this and they had one more year to go before.
That would be correct.
Okay.
I'll make the motion to approve.
Second. Motion made and seconded. Further discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor of going ahead and placing two positions on the annual town election, library trustees and redevelopment authority, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Five, zero. Moving on to minutes licenses, Jadia. Minutes for 11:28:17. Pleasure of the Board.
Mr. Chair, I realized too late that there are some changes in something that I had said during the Board of Selectmen comment period and I hadn't had time to tell the ladies in the office. Can we postpone it?
I'll make a motion. We table the minutes until our next meeting?
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Do I hear a second?
Sure.
Second. Second, discussion, those in favor of tabling, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All right, table to the next meeting. Not a problem. All right, one day special licenses. Carver Sportsman's Club Annual Game Supper for January 26 of 2018, noon to midnight.
And that's an alcohol license, correct?
I'm assuming so.
Yes. Make a motion to approve?
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Further discussion. Hearing none. Those in favor of approving, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Five, zero. Sampson's Pond Parking Permit Requests. We have three different fishing clubs. Date in July, July 29th, May 20th, and May 12th, all in 2018.
Mr. Chairman, just a point of clarification. This is just for parking permits because I know we tabled the discussion of the actual tournaments because Mr. Robertson had some concerns about making sure that the participants had clean boats and so forth before entering. And so I just want to make sure that we're not approving the tournaments here, we're just approving parking permits and they'll have to come up with the request to be, to have, hold the tournaments at a later time. Just wondering if there's a distinction here.
Didn't you speak on that last time?
Yeah, I did. I think we just moved the vote to this, to this meeting.
I think Dave found out.
All right, well, I mean, I don't know if it's parking.
I don't think this is parking. I think this is for the tournament.
Okay, it's a parking permit request.
Yeah, I know.
Didn't you find there was no issue really with?
Yeah, the boats weren't bringing the problem in.
He did his research.
All right. All right. I just want to be clear that, so this is actually to also allow the tournaments as well?
Correct.
That's all I, just point of clarification.
Yep.
Not trying to extend the meeting, Mr. Chairman.
Oh, yeah, you are, but that's all right.
Make a motion to approve then?
We could approve all three.
All, this is for all three, sir?
Second.
Your motion do...
I'll second that.
So you're seconding Helen's seconding?
Oh, I'm sorry. I did, I did. Again, I wasn't listening.
And any further discussion before this goes any further downhill? Hearing none. All those in favor of approving these three requests, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Hearing none. Five, zero. Our next meeting is scheduled for January 16, with another one on February 6. Do we have a need to go into executive session tonight?
Mr. Chairman, just on the next dates, if we're talking about having the department heads in, one meeting in January and one meeting in February, is that going to be sufficient?
No, I anticipate we'll have more meetings in February. We just haven't scheduled them.
Yeah. That's fine. Just...
Yeah, I don't have a problem with the one January, but yeah, we're going to need at least two, if not three, in February.
Okay. Thank you. Make a motion to go into executive session to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining negotiations with unions, police, in this case, that may have a detrimental effect in the bargaining position of the town if held an open session, and to reconvene an open session for the purpose of adjournment.
Second.
Okay. This will require a roll call vote.
Hold on one second. Sarah, given her past practices, probably doesn't want to participate.
Is this just police?
That is correct.
Is it health insurance?
That's an element of it, yes. Major element of it.
Does it concern retirees?
It has health. You recuse yourself of health on all issues.
Only when they've been bundled with retired employees and retirees?
That is correct.